I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Mayor and City Council in the City of Hattie Town, June workshop. I'd like to ask Councilman Frazier to use the completion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All council members, ladies and gentlemen, come aboard here. Just one word for the benefit of the new members tonight. This is a workshop, which means that we discuss the items at hand in preparation for our votes on Monday night. And tonight we make no motions or take no action on any of the issues or any other issue really. I just accept the break hours to be discussed before voting votes on Monday night. Our city manager is under the weather. I talked to Henry about 10:30 or so this morning, and he started feeling bad yesterday after being back to the doctor, who might have a strep throat, so hopefully he'll be all right. Doctor said he may be contagious, so it's wonderful. It's good to be back here. That's where Henry is. And I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience, too. The first order of business is to review the minutes for Bay 6th and May, a closed session and regular reading, and then the Bay 11th, regular reading. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to these minutes?
I do on page two. The first mention of my name, a council member, legality graduate, first name spelled wrong, he's using an L.
On the Bay 6th, is that what you mean?
That's correct, yes.
I think you've noticed that you got a revised closed session minutes. I'm on this. You're in there. You took care of the mission. Anything else? All right. We'll go to the approval on Monday night. If we can discuss the resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. And our usual resolution for water allocation is scheduled for June, Monday night. Any questions on the water allocation resolution?
I do have one. I guess you just saying said that the layout was going to change for the water allocation. I went through the numbers and we're all five, 250 gallons. When you add up, or when you add everything up, it should be 33,500, not 33,750. And so the remaining GPD at the bottom should be 24,900.
Should we kind of figure out whether it's over the square? Don't just list it correctly. Nice to point that out.
It's good to see we had five units off the market. Four units taken.
Anything else on the water allocation? All right, moving into the city manager's report. Absence of the city manager, he advised me that he was very concerned with the Bay 50 here tonight because he wanted to announce the 117 was online. About 400 years ago, he started that.
Goodbye, Marshall.
That's all he added to his report, was the 117 was online. Do you have any questions on any of the department reports? Or any questions for the city manager to get back to this floor on Monday?
I just want to point out that the sheet paper you got, that's the statistics for the police department. We're going to try to get into the package next time.
Okay. All right, legal report. Do you have anything for?
I do, I have a lot of things for us tonight, so I'll take Henry's time, too. The first thing, I'll do the easiest part. I have these to hand out to you. I didn't move them to you in advance because they're so riveting that you're going to want to read them, so paying attention. But it is a copy out of the Maryland Bar Association magazine, so you can kind of tell what it's already about. But it is about the NPS MS4, and that is the deal that we have with the county to deal with the next level of NPS permits. This tells you, if you have no idea what I'm talking about, from soup to nuts. And it also tells you, it's a little different, and I'm not trying to undermine anything, I'm just trying to say that we, at the level where we're figuring it, it's like, this is the way it is, permits coming out, this is how we're going to deal with it. And I think that we all agree that was the best way to go. But when you read this from a legal perspective, it's not a done deal. These permits are being litigated in every county in the state. So we're, I guess, doing the prudent thing, we're planning for what we think is going to happen, but it's not finished yet. And that's kind of, the article kind of ends like you need another sequel to it, is, well, what's happening? And they just tell you that every jurisdiction is fighting these permits. It's not the jurisdictions. You would think the jurisdictions are fighting because they're too numerous. It's like the environmental type groups are fighting because they're not regulatory enough. So that was the other surprise. So anyway, I wanted you to read this because I know that that is a big budget drain for us, and it also affects some of our priorities, because we're trying to do a project here in town that will work among Tervanian Terrace. So anyway, I'll hand that out at the end of the meeting.
So what you're really saying is that the money we have allocated is the minimum?
I think so. I think that when you read, you know, I know the mechanics of it, but I never really understood the whys. And the whys are, in order to meet the Bay's reduction of where they need to be, they keep getting everything cleaner and cleaner, the wastewater treatment plants, the farmers, they still not making it. So now they need to say, well, we got to do a stormwater. And painting on the road, this goes into the bay is not enough. And so they're saying, and if you were a regulator now, where can you get your best bang for your buck? Well, all of it goes into a pipe that goes into a pipe that comes out somewhere by a creek. I can label where that is, so I can fix that, as opposed to general bramble. But yeah, I would say that this is going to be a very costly deal. Think about it, I'm sure back in the day, we didn't have the sewer treatment plant, they'd just do whatever they wanted with sewer. Look how much we spent on that now. We're in the day where we had no regulation on stormwater, just think where we'll be on that. So I thought that was very interesting, it was kind of discouraging in the whole scene of things. Okay, the next item I have is one that I don't know too much about, but I wanted to highlight for you, because the city manager asked me to, is that the owner of the former Sheets property, okay, back here, has approached the city, I'm not exactly who in the city, because I don't have any details, about a possible out-of-cycle zoning change for the property. As you recall, the property was Sheets with gas station, gas pumps, they went out, and Sheets had known it, obviously. And once they went out and the gas pumps came out, if they didn't reinstall those within a year, the grandfathering, we'll call it, the non-conform use expired. And that has occurred now. So no more gas pumps, can't comply with zoning. But the request, as I understand it, is that they would like to change the zoning, but the current zoning will not allow a drive-through. A drive-through for what? I have no idea. I don't know what that is. And that was one of the things that Henry brought to my attention, the individual property owner wanted to come and address you tonight about this. And I told him, I said, from a legal standpoint, it needs to be vetted. I mean, I don't even know what we're talking about before we come out and talk to everybody. So the city manager agreed, and we're going to do that. Obviously, my concern, I don't even know what they want to do and I don't care, my concern is, we take one piece of property and try to rezone it. That's usually spot zoning, that's usually can't be done. So somebody had to explain to me the rationale of why we think we could do that first. But I wanted you to make aware of that, because there was a repeated request to come and talk to you, and we established that that would not be appropriate. So I want to let you know that that's what we're doing right now.
Now, that's downtown. Do you have any thinking zoning?
My understanding that at planning and zoning, the subject was discussed, but I don't believe any representative came. And if they did come, nothing in writing, because usually you would think it would come to me to be reviewed, and I have not seen anything in writing that I can cancel with that. It's downtown business, and I would imagine the request, again, assumption, is to change to general business, which will allow drivers. And that's at the border of where that is.
Is that the border? Because I thought that was...
Well, it might be two properties down, but it's close to the border. So, yeah, it's just an assumption. So I guess, I just want to let you know, when somebody would call or complain, hey, I didn't come to the council, yes, because we try to make sure we understand what's going on before we throw it to you all, because you look to us to say what you do.
Well, do we get a recommendation for planning and zoning before they come in?
I think we should get, it should be fully admitted, correct? I mean, and it should be something, I mean, I hate to be the wet blanket, that's what you pay me for, but if this is not possible because it's spot zoning, we don't need to talk about it at all. You know, so...
It's just the one party that's interested in Sheets. It's not like there's a couple of different people who are saying...
Just the property.
It's just the property owner who's saying, I want the zoning changed. I mean, I, the assumption would be, I guess if you can get a drive-through, you have somebody interested in, I would assume a drive-through means kind of like a fast food place.
Either that or you're trying to make it marketable that way.
Right. And, you know, just to give you, when I say these things like spot zoning and things like that, typically, you cannot go to a property and change its zoning. Okay? We would love to do that. In fact, you would think maybe we should be able to do that, because we know what should work here and what doesn't, but that's not how it's done. You can only change the zoning on a specific property if there was a mistake. And a mistake doesn't mean I should have zoned it. It means that when we printed the map, the red should have been yellow. I mean, a mistake in what was done. Or a change in the character of the neighborhood, they can make that up. Those are, there's a rip, one property zoning change. Otherwise, you either do it during a master plan zoning type, which we're not ready for, or a comprehensive rezoning. You do all the zoning in the town, and you say what needs to be changed. And so you can kind of see the Cardanian past, where you say, well, I really want to fix this piece here. But if you open the floodgate, it becomes a task that's, I mean, we do it every five to seven years, you know? But we want to be responsive, and I don't know the details, I mean, so I guess we'll wait until that happens. On a positive note, we'll go back to the water situation. We have been looking at the water situation and saying, this is going to change. And we are finally at the point where we have numbers that have been vetted one time by the staff. And so we're having our second round of vetting to make sure they're right. If you use your Exhibit A, the one that Councilman Bigliotti talked about, or something like that, just as an example, and instead of thinking about the water, think about it as much, because we often get this, think of this as a bank account. The gallons available, or the money available is 58,000. And then we have obligations, kind of think of that as your automatic withdrawals every month that are going to come out, and then you have what's left over basically for you to spend. Okay? And that's how we've been living, and it's worked fine, it's helped us through the dark times, we had enough water, and we were never sued. So, you know, this system's been going on since 2004. It's a very good system. However, we have spent a lot of money on water improvements, mainly the Main Street Water Program. And to get you to that top number, the 58,000, that was the difference between what you produced and what you consumed. So that's what you have, and if it's a little more complicated, that would, that's what you have available, the difference. Well, we consumed a lot of water, so I'm going to make it up, let's say, these are made up numbers. Let's say that we produce 500,000 gallons a day, and we consume, based on this, 442,000 gallons a day, so we had the rest of it allocated. Well, that 442, if you added up all the water bills for water meters, it did not add up to 442. A lot of it was lost water that escaped in the system in leaks and things like that. There is water that's not billed, meaning like to the fire company and to the town hall, but we know how much that is. So when we fixed the Main Street pipes at a significant expense, you tightened your system up, which means you didn't produce, you didn't need to produce 500,000 gallons anymore. You could, but you produced maybe 300,000 gallons. Okay? Because that's all everybody needed to use. So you saved 200,000 gallons worth of water use. If you follow me then, and we're using rough numbers, you'd have to re-zero this, you'd have to add the 200,000 gallons that you saved back to this number. Okay? So it's not 58/4 anymore, it's a larger number because you cut your consumption down. And consumption doesn't mean the people's consumption, it means the waste, the long stay consumption. Okay? So that's a great thing. We're trying to find out exactly what that number is. I mean, the engineers know it, I don't need to know it, but whatever it is, it's a known number. And what that means is, if you go back to the old days of, remember recharge? We had to get recharge before we could allow development? We don't have to worry about that now. We're going to have to worry about that in a few years, in several years, but it was always, if you wanted to build, you had to provide water, and that meant provide recharge. Before you could ever put a shovel in the ground, and you can see, nobody else put shovels in the ground. We might be able to change that paradigm to some extent, to say, you can build some, and then you will have to get the water and the recharge, which is not water anymore, because I told you we have it. It's a recharge...
To make up for what we already gave you.
If that makes sense. So you're building first and then getting the recharge. We're doing that in East Crossing for their first 111 units, and there's no reason why we can't do that with the Meadow book as well. And so developers approached us, he has, I want to say, I don't really know how many, maybe 108 units left in his last phase, and he might call that Phase 4, I think, it's his last phase. He wants to break 108 units down and make them into mini-faces. So call it Phase 4A and Phase 4B. And then Phase 4A, he wants to break it down into a smaller stage, so that basically he doesn't have to put sewer and water for the whole thing, he can do it in manageable chunks. Because the model in town that works is manageable chunks, like Crete Side. They built 66, they didn't build 120 at one time. So, I know I'm random, I hope you're following, but the idea is, if we can give him 54 units, he can do a 28 or 56 units, he can do 28 in a first phase, 28 in a second phase, and we have enough water to say, yeah, we'll give you 56, and you can start building. And then when you get close to your 56, and you're close to getting ready to do your next phase, we're going to need to talk about recharge and how we make this whole again, because we're letting you have water that we got recharge for, you need to pay us back for that recharge when you go forward, if that makes sense. And that has tremendous value to us, because we have no more units to sell. That's it. After, there's like four left in Crete Side, and there's a few left in Carol Vista, and then the capital, the income, the impact fee, there's no more to add. So we would want developers to be able to build first before spending this, because it's not as simple as getting recharge, it's going through the state debt primarily. So, take a deep breath, long story short, we need to change the water allocation plan. We need to get that number correct, and then we need to turn to the developer, which right now is Meadow book, and say, yeah, we'll be able to give you 54 units, change your DARA so that you know you have it, we'll put it on here so we know we're giving it to you, and now we want you to build. And if he started today, he wouldn't be selling houses till next summer, just like in the main spot. So for the next year, which means almost the next budget year, there's not any new revenue. But if you do this this year, you can get new revenue coming in next year. And I guess that's how you start pulling yourself out of the hole. So that kind of is the staff, I mean, sitting in, you sit down, we've all tried to figure out, how can we get more tax and water and sewer income with the existing amount of money we already spent? And that's this, that's the way it is. So that kind of answers a little bit of your question, Councilman Bigliotti, and it also tells you what, coming down the road, the seat, we're going to be asked to talk about a DARA change, so that the developer knows he has that water locked up, so he can spend the money to put stuff in the ground. That make, I mean, that's a huge thing right now, it's just that you're really on the tip of it, you're going to hear a lot more about it over the coming months. Any questions? Yeah?
Question. Going back to water loss, because obviously we're going to have loss one way or the other, is there a percentage that we can anticipate? Is that something that we can have on the water allocation?
It's factored in, and this sounds like, when I first heard this, it was like, I cannot believe we can't do better. But I guess you can always do better, but it's how much do you spend to get the streets to make it perfect? 12%. Anything less than 20% is considered good, less than 15% is considered, don't touch it. We're at about 12%. And you measure that based on how much the pumps pump out of the ground, add up all your water meters and your unbilled use, that's the difference. So when we got Main Street fixed, we're down to that 12%. And that has a great, I mean, I know it sounds all mathematic, but it has a great impact on your infrastructure. When you need more water usage, you act like you're taking it out of the ground, but that means your pumps run constantly to pump it out there and feed it that water. And when they run constantly, they break more. And if they break, and you needed that water in the first place, then you're double broken. So the less water you have to pump, the less the pumps have to run, the less wear and tear, and it's just better on the system all along. So it was an expensive proposition, but this is the fruit, this is what is seen now. So all that being said, there's a lot of negotiation that has to happen between the developer and the town. But I think it's positive, and I guess the inclination is, if you didn't want to do this concept, you just said, I'm not into this at all, we don't want to waste any time. But we've kind of got the assumption of how could we not be into it, because this pays us back for all the money we spent. So do it mathematically, $14,000 per unit times 54 units, that's the capital that you're going to get in, that you're going to get back. And now you have 54 units paying taxes and 54 units using water and paying for the time. How could you lose? And what did you have to spend? None, you've already spent. So that's part of what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys understand the recharge?
Yes, it's a... It's a concept, there's one other piece. So if you understand the recharge, the other thing was, we had a bill passed several years ago, we were really proud of ourselves, called the Brinkley Bill. Somehow, we were really proud of ourselves, got our picture taken, and the bill got hijacked when it went to MDE, because it was supposed to do all good things, and now it does not so good things, but I guess that's the way it is. But the theory behind that is, the calculation of recharge is in flux right now. MDE is not really hyper about it anymore. So if you push this off for three, four, five years, maybe the concept of recharge is so much different in five years that you may not have to do it. And the reason I'm, I know a lot of people kind of look at it, say, well, we want to get it, but we're losing something. Recharge is fake. Okay? You've got to start with recharge is fake. The rain falls on everybody's property, and a recharge is so well, whether we own the land or not. So if we spend real tax dollars to buy easements, so that we can say, now this rainwater is ours, it's just money out of our pockets and into somebody else's pockets, and it's a fake capital issue. And so we're hopeful that the longer that the state pushes that out there, maybe they'll come to some sense on that.
And that recharge doesn't have to be indecent, eh?
No, we can get recharge all the way over to Manchester, from our water station, you could buy recharge at Manchester. And so when I say easement, you think like, oh, we can put some picnic tables on this land over in Manchester and have our Tony Town Satellite Park. No, it's just a fake easement, it's on the land records, it's all paperwork, it doesn't change anything except money changing hands, and that's, seems a little ridiculous.
Kind of like the SEC optioning off bandwidth, it's just air.
Yeah. So, anyway, I gave you like the 75% version of what's going on, but this is a positive thing. And the positive thing is the fact that the developer approached us, and he said, I want to do this. And my thought, again, of the city is, and we want that to happen. This is development that we have paid for, we want our money back, and that's how we get it back. So, all right, I got two more things. The mayor's favorite subject, floodplain. All right. Here's the story of the floodplain issue. And I'm going to go back to the beginning of time, I'm just going to go from where we left it. We left this with the fact that we know that we needed to do something, and we wanted to adopt the county ordinance, but the county ordinance hadn't been adopted, because even though they were the darling of FEMA, FEMA after they adopted, said, oh, they want all these changes. And we got hung up on things that are really tangible, like what kind of fence you could have, because the county ordinance, so if you can only have a two-wire fence, and like, how many do you have of those in town? Like, nobody has two-wire fences of that. And what happened then is, the county had changed everything to try to get FEMA to be active again. And they're on the road to getting that done, because they have to have it done by September or October or August or sometime coming up. Because that's when those maps, remember when it was years ago, we said those maps wouldn't be effective for a couple of years? We're here. We're here. So the maps are effective then, and the ordinance there needs to be effective. The long and short of it is, in working with the county, they will, their new ordinance will do everything we want. We can live with it. Meaning, in rough terms, if you live in a floodplain area, and you want to do something in a floodplain, there's ways for you to do it, if you can mitigate the situation, and if you can't, guess what? Living in a floodplain, you're not going to be doing stuff there, and that's the way it is. So what's that mean? Somebody who lives, I always forget the name of the road, it's either buffalo or bison, some kind of animal, out that way. Their backyard is right by the creek and goes down like that, and they want to put a swimming pool in there? Probably aren't going to be able to do that, because in the floodplain area, so that flood rises is going to take the swimming pool down, and that's really bad for them, but it's really bad if you're made there and you're made right. So the idea is that you probably will be able to do it. You want to put a shed for your lawn mower? You might be able to do it, maybe you have to build it up on stilts, or maybe you have to do something that can mitigate it. Cannibals allows all that. It allows fences that are not just two-wire fences, okay, but you have to have them so that the floodwater, like, could go under there, something to that kind of thing. If you want to do an addition, and you live in a flood hazard area, you might be able to do it, but you got to do a whole bunch of engineering stuff to prove that your addition can even cause. So it's reasonable, nobody likes you told what to do, but you are causing an impact when you do that. If we adopt the county ordinance, then we can get into the National Floodplain Program, and then we are eligible for the National Floodplain Brake Insurance, and everybody is happy after how many years of dealing with this.
So, I'm sorry. So the county, adopting the county plan would give people living in these affected areas the ability to be able to appeal, to say, hey, I want to put a shed, or I want to put a pool here.
So it would go, because this was always my city, I was always the anti, which is why they're making me tell you to do it then, okay? Because I was always the fighter. So if you're a citizen, and you come in and you say, I want to build a building that requires a building permit, and I want to do it right in the floodplain, and Jim Rekert was asleep at the switch that day, and he says, sure, and he goes down to the county, even if it didn't get floodplain review, and one of the inspectors come out, the building inspectors, they will not approve it, because their codes, the vote code, or whatever they call that now, says you can't do those things. So you would never be allowed to do that anyway anyhow. If you want to do something that doesn't require a permit, so sheds that are smaller than a certain size, you still have to come in here and get a zoning certificate. So Jim Rekert would then look on the map and say, oh, you live in the middle of Carol Vista, no problem. Or, oh, there's a stream in your backyard, you need to go talk to the county to see whether that's a problem. Could be a problem, might not be a problem. If it is a problem, there's a way that you can get a waiver, maybe, or there's a way that you can't. If there is a problem, that's like, glad we all talked about this, the stream is on my property, but my property is a acre long, it's not going to affect it, then we go ahead and issue a zoning certificate. So it's more regulation, there's no question about it, but it's livable. I was anti the whole time, you all know that, and now I'm either worn down, or I can actually see the point where I was like, yeah. So here's the magic, how we do this, if you're up for this. We can say unofficially, we're adopting the county ordinance, but we're really not. Okay? So here's the legal side. We are exempt from county regulation, so we are going to exempt ourselves from the exemption. That means the county ordinance applies here. That means the county enforces it here. That means any change down the road in the county to the ordinance does not have to be re-adapted by us, it's just a part here. The forest conservation law, that, we do that already. That's neat and clean. That's neat and clean and easy and the county's on board. We talked with Dale, who's in charge of it, Tom Bell, those people. Everybody's on board. When this was adopted by the commissioners, and I think it's previous board of commissioners, all commissioners were on board with it. I mean, so everybody's on board with doing what needs to be done. And this will address where we're at. So now I just need to know, are you on board with that? If you are, I can draft the ordinance, which will be a couple of lines long, saying we're exempting it. And I can put it in the package for Monday night. It can be, it can go through the process. I mean, it has to be introduced and if you want to wait a month, we can put it off a month. The issue is, we should probably have somebody place it. The mayor got a nasty letter. He's gonna go to jail if this is not done by, I think, September.
September 10th, I remember.
And I know he's very, it's on his calendar.
We'll visit you.
It's on, it's on Lyle's calendar too. So the idea would be if we introduce it in June, which will be Monday night, you could pass it in July and you met the deadline. If you don't want to do it, you can do it in July and then you pass it in August and you would be right at the deadline. So those are my thoughts.
If I remember correctly, this only affects a very small number of properties in city limits, right?
Yes.
Five percent?
Not even that.
Not even that.
Like two for sure. The, I can do it like empirically. The numbers of properties that have a federal insurance rate management map or a firm map are twenty-two. And twelve of them are owned by the city. Because they're all, they're all floodplain. I mean, there's no housing there. So, so ten places in town. The ones that aren't on the map are these little tributaries that you see going through the thing. And the one that is, the one that causes me the most heartburn is the houses that back up to the middle school. I think it's the middle school. But there's a row of houses and there's like a drainage ditch that people mow, okay? Because it looks like a ditch. That's considered one. So can you imagine if you came in and say, oh, that's a floodplain? You're not. That's the one where you need to kind of say, all right, let's work out and see what the really good story is. So yeah, very small amount of people. And, you know, that's what they've impressed upon me. They twisted my arm and said, you know, we're holding this thing up for what? A couple of people. And the bigger thing is, is while this is not, you know, we don't have any developers here, right? While this is not in effect, the developers really don't have to follow the floodplain ordinance. They do, because we say you have to. And we cross it and everybody designed it. So that's why we don't have any more problems. They give us big buffers where the floodplains are. But we've been doing that because we're saying, hey, you gotta follow this or else we won't figure it out. It would be better if it actually was in the way. Jim Reekert liked that much better because he'd write and show it.
So those properties in a floodplain, when they sell their property, does flood insurance become required for them?
It becomes cheaper for them to get them.
Okay.
It's a big thing.
I mean, it's probably required as determined later, but it's not required as determined this ordinance. Meaning that I will not loan you money on that house that may wash away unless you get insurance that'll pay me off if it does wash away.
If, if they are getting a mortgage, they have to have flood insurance. If they don't have it, they're just a gatherer. They don't have to have.
And that was the mayor's initial problem is that person cannot get federally backed flood insurance now because we are not members of the program. So they have to pay more, whatever more will be than the other person should.
So Jake, when you put together this, the ordinance service, could you include a copy of the county's, the actual plan for that, so we can review it?
I can give you a copy of the county's and you'll know that's what we're adopting, but ours is, you know, one page. And it's not that I have to do it for Monday. I mean, the idea was if we can get it done, it'll be something off my list. It's something the mayor won't worry about anymore. But if we can do it in July, it's really up to you. But you need to give me the direction.
Shouldn't it be that or not?
Yes. All right, so.
If a waiver, somebody applies for a waiver, that has to go through the county now.
Through the county. And when they call it a variance, okay, they shouldn't use that. Waiver's a better word. Because variance, the P Z A zoning and stuff like that, we'll call it a waiver. It's administrative. It means like you go into the staff at the bureaucrat level and you say, hey, this is my stuff. And they're like, okay, we can waive this and we do it. Kind of like what we do internally here. There's no hearing board or anything like that. And the way they're talking about it is, you know, they want people to be able to do things too. But they don't want to do things that are irresponsible. All right, I'll draft that up.
Thank you.
Last one. I brought this up before and now it's real. Dollar General. And you heard the whole thing. I'll give you the thirty-second background on Dollar General. They built Dollar General. People that built it sold it to, it's not Dollar General ever, okay? It's some other company. But they sold it to the current owners that leased it to Dollar General. The people that built it posted a bond that said they would do all the stuff in the public works agreement. One of those will sign a stormwater easement. That's not what it's really called, but that's what it is. We made Carolbissa do this, okay? We've made all the developers do, McKendys do this. And what that says is under the state stormwater law, which we have to enforce, we adopted it, you've got it as a property owner, you have to sign this. It says you're gonna maintain these stormwater features under this new law. And if you don't, the city has the power to come in. And then if the city doesn't do it, the state comes after the city. So we're kind of responsible. So it's a standard agreement. You know, we've changed things a little bit here and there for people when they have questions, but it's a standard agreement. So we told the developers, the builders of this thing, say, you know, we don't care that you transferred it because you shouldn't have transferred it until you did this easement. You, we're holding several hundred thousand dollars of your money. And I know you want it back, but until you get us a signed easement, we're not gonna do that. We came to you with that and you all said, that's right, you know, tell them that. And so they said, and you know, there's, I haven't been personally involved, so it's easy for me to catch that with them, okay? But they have it all and say, oh, the broker that we talked to won't contact the owner. Like, why don't you talk to the owner? A lot of mine is, I haven't done any of it, nor did I think I should, okay? Because it's not my responsibility. It's their responsibility. So they have submitted a letter, mail them, that says, we would like to request the release of our Public Works Improvement Bond for Dollar General, yada, 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 yada. Doody Mac, Doody Mac instructors has fulfilled all obligations of section four of the amended P O D A for this project, currently in stormwater maintenance, is not the responsibility of Doody Mac, hence our basis for the bond release for plus. Now, they built all the water in the sewer and the streets. They did everything in there except for the one little line that said, you gotta have this easement sign. And they're saying they can't get it done. We have not approached anyone because I put the brace on the saying before we spend money. You know, we need to decide what kind of deal. So here's our options. We can give them their money back, just throw our hands up and just say, oh, well. We could tell them, which we already told them, go to the owner and get him to sign it. And that's just gonna be a couple of months from now. They'll come back again and say they can't do it. Or we could do what we did for, I don't remember who it was, but it was like the Food Lion CBS where we said, hey, if you can't do it, we'll do it. Then you're gonna pay for it. So we keep track of our time and we go after the people and say, we're gonna sign this and then we're gonna split up that money from the bond when we release it. Because, I mean, it's just that simple. If you want to, if you pay me to do this letter, the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for that. These guys should, because I'm doing their work for them. And they are spending, in my opinion, more time trying to get out of it than doing it. Kind of like doing your homework. Spend more time trying to figure out how not to do it instead of just putting your pencil to paper and do it and be done. I would think that if the city walked in there and handed it to the manager of Dollar General and said, we know it's not you, but you better find out who it is because this is what's gonna happen here. There's lots of pressure we can apply. But we need to know what you think about it.
Jake, how much money was collected for a stormwater fund on that property?
I, I think we're talking like four or five hundred thousand dollars for everything. And the way we've done it, I mean.
And the city is holding that money now.
And if you wanted to be absolutely fair, and I'm sure it's our job to be fair because our job is to protect us, the citizens, but yeah, they did finish the water, so maybe we can give them that back. And yeah, we did get in the sewer. Maybe we can give them that back. Maybe there are things, pieces we can give them back. But at the end of the day, if I gave you all the cards in my hand and left holding nothing, which is what it'd be, then how did I protect it? So we usually use the strong arm tactic, saying, look, we're not even gonna consider this till everything's done. And if you think about it, we don't give back money if the streets aren't cracked. We say, fix all the punctual stuff and then come to us when it's done. Because the citizens that use a development expect it to be completed, not partially completed. And we learned our lesson, this is pre-Jake, with the bridge that was never built. Right? They put that off and put that off and put that off to the last phase and the city didn't hold any money for that. And now you have a road that doesn't go anywhere because there's no bridge and we don't have enough money to, from the developer to do it. So, you know, my recommendation is if you're not just gonna say it's not worth it, and it might not be worth it because what we're talking about is a couple, go out there and look, it's a couple of burns. I mean, it's not like stormwater facilities, like you're thinking stormwater is a couple of mounds of dirt that need to be maintained. How do you maintain, you know, what is there really to do? But for the principle of the matter, I have held up tools for pennies for, you know, several other developments where they didn't sign it. Well, why would we make an exception?
Or is it significant?
I've done the work. I just did, here's signments. And if you don't like it, we can negotiate, but it's done, signed. So I need to know, because I, the staff has different perspectives of, you know, dealing with this. How do you want to deal with it? Do you want to hold the ground and go after it and tell them this is what it is? Do you want the staff to do it? Do you want me to do it? What do you want to do? And the reason I say that, usually I don't give you choices, but there's a cost factor, obviously, the difference in different.
The market tells you if we don't make them do it, they're just gonna come back and blame us and that's what's gonna happen.
It always does. We're always responsible. We're always here.
I'd prefer to handle it just like we did the CBS food line program.
And what I'll do is I'll tell Jim, everybody's agreeable. I'm gonna tell Jim Reekert to write them back and say that the council's discussed this and we are gonna get this agreement executed and keep track of it. Then we're gonna charge you that. And once we got it done, then we'll consider redoing this if we find it's possible. That's, it just depends on how serious.
I think I give them how much you guys could just do in six thirty minutes.
Can we see that letter on Monday? Did you draft?
Uh, I'm gonna get Jim Reekert to it, but I can tell him we'd like to see it on Monday. Because I, I, the reason, I mean, I'm not trying to, I am trying to push it off on him, but my letter only exists for one time and you see the lawyer letterhead. Because then they get their lawyer and then, you know how lawyers are. Nobody likes that. So if he writes in this strong worded thing, then you have another bite at the apple. If they try to lawyer up or if they don't comply, then it's like, oh, they're gonna lawyer. Apparently scary, so I don't know. But yeah, I'll talk to him about that. Okay?
There was, there was a lot that went into the CBS food line and that's the only thing that were, they weren't fuckering on me with what. It was the same type of thing.
And we eventually capitulated. We eventually, for a three-foot square section that they just could not get and people in Florida to engage us. And so we assessed up an amount, I forget what it was, but it was thousands of dollars. Like we said, well, if you can't do it, then you're gonna pay us X dollars. And they're like, here's, here's the money. We're done.
Now, was that the piece of property that was owned by Redco?
Yeah. And when we talk about it, it sounds like it's this big thing. It's literally, it's like, it's in the road. So, you know, sometimes there's, there's rules and then there's results. I mean, it's in the road already. So what are we gonna do? How much money are we gonna spend it? Own something you already have. Okay, I can work on that as well. And the last thing, you have my, my line item report. If there's any questions, you can see, I'm so happy there's a lot of completers on this one.
Yeah, I understand.
Because there hasn't been a lot completed. It's all completed at once. But the ones that I needed direction on were item five, which we just talked about. Item seven, I don't need directions from, from the council at this point in time. That's more from the city of what they want me to do. The floodplain legislation would be the other one. That's item seventeen. And the rest are all just in various projects of, you know, processes of couldn't done.
What, what's the update on the, on your fire characterization?
They contacted the city. They gave us a sketch plan towards the end of it, like seven days ago. And when they did that, the property owned by Larry Flukener, which is between the railroad tracks and East Coast and the one ninety-four, he had acquired from the state and abandoned a piece of their right of way. And that piece was not even corporate limits. But now it's owned by him. So we need him to join in on the annexation. So he was agreeable, but it just took time for all that to happen. So it, orders have been cut to give us a meets and bounds description. That'll come in next month or two and then it's off to the races with that.
Questions for Jake? Are you gonna busy last week?
I'm not gonna work this month, so.
We're gonna have to, unfinish this. We're gonna have to unfinish this last one. We're gonna forget to write the financial report. We've got only one thing, financial. Jake, for funding, any questions on the accounts payable? Let's, we don't have council reports on here. Remember I said I was going to skim a bunch of council reports. I was gonna give the council reports on funding and an update for our department of liaison reports that we've used a place that we probably haven't had a chance to do any department of liaison work directly this month. Well, just going around the room, just to, we have a council, general council, public council. Do we have anybody from this group?
Just remind me really about the history museum event on Saturday, if you can, if you want.
Yes, yes, yes. Big, big deal, Sam, with that.
The intermodal scholarships went a lot better this year. I had five applications from, uh, I had six applications from five municipalities. So that was really encouraging. I had Westminster, Union Bridge, Hampstead, Sykesville and Mountberry. And we selected two, Hampstead and Sykesville, to receive them in here. So those students will be in attendance at the chapter meeting. Mayors, Devin and Shaw actually, this week is scholarship week at all the schools. So those two mayors actually went to the schools to present the students with their certificates. But they'll be at the chapter meeting as well.
We're good.
I was, I was glad to participate in this year.
Yeah, I have a handout. I want to get to everybody in the council and if I could have somebody hand this out in the audience. I would like to, one, two, three, four, five of these. Somebody give this to the audience. This is the history of adoption of the water rate increases that was in materials that I studied. And it shows that under the years two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, that they calculated in the two thousand eleven adoption, the water rate increases that are in the, in the Tony Town Record, a five percent increase for inflation. To flip the page over, I printed out the latest inflation rate for the United States is negative two percent for the twelve months ending April two thousand fifteen. It's published by the US government on May the twenty-second, two thousand fifteen. So that's very current. This is done every month. And so the rates that were printed in the Tony Town Record, I don't know when they were adopted, but I gather that they were adopted in two thousand eleven. Is that true? The current rates that are advertised on front of the Tony Town Record? The main block on the front of the paper that just came out says that the water rates could increase July first.
Right.
Right. And those rates that wanted to be increased were adopted in two thousand eleven? Is that correct?
If I remember correctly, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, well, this is the history of adoption of the water rate increase. And it's my belief that they miscalculated in two thousand eleven. A five, you see it in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, five percent, five percent, five percent annual change for inflation. And the inflation rate is not five percent. It's only, it's only negative two percent. Actually, we have a strength, a shrinking of value of the dollar down increase in the last cycle. So I would like to, based on that. like to, based on that, review that on Monday, when we come in and make that agenda an item of the new business that we discussed the 2011 adoption of the water rates advertised in Tony Town Record. I'd like that to be on the agenda.
What do you base your theory that it's inflation?
It says right here on the adoption of the 2011 rate schedule. It says the table below shows the water and sewer rates that were adopted by the city council in 2008 and 2011 shaded in yellow. And so that's-
Yeah, but where does it say based on inflation?
Five, five percent, five percent.
Then there's something to it.
Inflation has something?
It's not inflation. That's to cover our debts that we owe in the out years. That's based on anticipated growth to bring the money in. It's not based on inflation.
Well, we don't have a five percent increase coming in on July first. What's the amount of the increase from July first?
Whatever it is, I don't remember. It's whatever the new rate. You know, we didn't, we didn't sit here and pull these numbers out of a hat, okay? We had a corporation that does municipal financial planning based on water usage. We had our bond people here that understand the bond work. Okay? We looked at how much money we owe because of unfunded requirements placed on the city for providing water and sewer. Based on those numbers, the anticipated amount of water that we're gonna be able to bill, you divide the numbers out and you come up with, this is how much money we need per thousand gallons in order to pay our bills. The sewer rate is based on the water consumption rate. It's not a number based on fiction. It's a number based on how much we're gonna have to pay out every year to meet our debt. And there's no way while I'm here that the city is gonna default on its debt. It's not a fictitious number. We gotta get you to understand that.
Well, I had said before in the last election when Joe was elected, that when you raise the rate and you reach the elasticity on it, on the rate, and you collect less revenue when you raise the rate, that's gonna happen again.
And that's-
We were walking door to door, and there's lots of foreclosure. We met a lot of people in the campaign. And how much water and sewer rate does a person pay who loses their house to foreclosure?
Well, I'm wondering your understanding of the concept. We had to build the penny. We had basically a couple of choices. How are we gonna pay this bill? We're gonna borrow the money, obviously, we're gonna borrow the money. Borrowed money, we're gonna take it back. How are we gonna pay it back? Well, we could simply figure out how much we owe and divide it by the number of gallons that we're using and add that to the water bill.
Right.
But that would have been astronomical. That would have been beyond any, any concept of being able to deal with that. So what council voted to do was to bring this rate in gradual and, and a step-by-step manner until we were able to, to secure our debt and to repay it according to the direction of our financial planners that were good and our bond council. So, we were, we were acting in the direction of the bond council in order to satisfy debt to keep us liquid. Anything that would, would jeopardize that rate schedule would, would jeopardize the liquidity of the city. And we can't do that. We can't, we can jeopardize the-
If you raise rates before you collect less revenue, how much less revenue will you collect when you raise them again? It's elastic to price the consumption of water. And so when you raise the rate, people use less water. The fellow lives next to you had a fish pond. He said, I don't refill it anymore. He said, all the fish are dead because of the water rate.
And that's a decision to conserve water.
Yeah, it is.
I can't water bill this high, I don't have a high fish washer.
We flush the toilet a little less often at our house because of that. And so-
And, and that's a very intelligent thing to me. When you talk about people who, who don't like the $450 water bill, then don't use 20,000 gallons of water in a quarter. That is extremely high amount of water to use. That's why the bill is that high. They're being charged for their usage. It's as simple as that.
Well, actually not, because we should move from to a one-to-one where I'm high. We're only measuring the water rate, not the sewer rate. If I believe in the hood that's out of the yard and the run, the water runs the yard, I don't use any sewer. But we're charged three to one. We ought to change the ratio to one-to-one because we use, well, one gallon of water comes in the faucet, one gallon of water goes down the drain, not one to three. You have a wrong ratio there just to start, and that's an injustice that's got to be brought in throughout the town.
But the number is still gonna come out the same because we gotta pay and-
I'm just warning you that if you go through this, you're gonna collect less revenue because of conservation.
That's figured into their calculations. They know, right?
Okay, just a minute before I stop, I'd like to have it on the agenda to talk about further on Monday. But I wanna read this fine print at the bottom of my handout, and then I'll be done.
We need to do a little more special, I'll just make sure-
No, just one more thing, and then I'll be done.
I'm not convinced you understand how this works. I would suggest you, if you wanted to come to the city hall so we can explain in more detail to you, so that you'll have a better feel for how it works.
Why just read it? You collect rates, the rate lasts a lot. You collect the less revenue, that means you've reached your last-
No, excuse me, man, I'm talking. One of the reasons we gave you the package we gave you the other night was to bring you up to date on how this was constructed. Have you had a chance to look over that?
Yeah, let me read the fine print, and then I'll be done. It says here, water and sewer rates shown above, read, everybody pick up their handout and read it. It says, for a $100,000 usage, in both 2008 and 2011, the rate structure is contemplated based on a five percent annual increase to keep pace with inflation beginning in 2015 and 2017. So what was said earlier is not true. It is the five percent on this chart, five percent, five percent, five percent in the rates that are in the Tony Town Record. It is the, the false calculation on inflation, just as I said when I brought this up and produced this, this, I'm unhappy about that. We have a look at the 2011 allocation if, if the, if the inflation rate in the original calculation of your professional people is in there, and it's clearly narrow on this matter, and it needs further discussion.
Well, make an appointment to come to the city hall. Let's, let's talk about this and try to figure out where we're coming from on it. Because the numbers that we have in, have structured for these increases are required by our bond council, required by our financial planners. And we can't deviate from them. We will default on our loan if we do.
Paying a loan if you collect less revenue?
There's, there's no flexibility here. You just simply can't rate a magic wand and make these rate increases go away.
I don't think you're hearing me, but that's okay.
You have to have another alternative, how you're gonna replace the funds. That's, that's the key.
You're gonna have less funds at the higher rate than you have now. It's gonna reduce the amount of payment, amounts paid at the bill. There's a place where you might want to lower rates to increase the amount of payments you can make on the loan. That's my point.
All right, what was it, Angela, what did you ask?
Angela, can I ask, when does Dan and Ford come in again to look at our, our finances? Would that be this year?
No, they didn't. When we did our budget, when, when did Dan and Ford come in? We came up, our actual uses came up short of our projection, didn't it, Jay?
Yeah. The last time they came in was before the adoption of the last budget because we needed to true up, and that, that took a year to do, true up what their predictions were versus what reality was. And they came in because, and that's why you had to do a significant budget amendment because you didn't adopt the rates. And, you know, I don't, I'm not prepared. I don't have the stuff that I have to go over. I would, I don't think that this is accurate anymore. I know we adopted the rates in 2011, but I know that we had a big financing for refinancing last year because we were gonna have not a rate spike, but a payment spike, meaning that we were gonna, it's not principal and interest, but you did that concept. We were gonna start paying more, and we couldn't afford that at the current rate level. So we stretched that out. And I, I know that happened prior to last this whole year. And I don't remember exactly the details of what that was, but we have all, I mean, so. But it was at least, if we're in 2015 now, it would have been in this time last year.
Yeah, it was about this, not this year. It's gotta be for this year.
The reason I was asking, you know, when the next time, you know, they would come in and heard, you know, adopted a, maybe that was something they could look at, and if they were coming in again this year, do you, do you know when the next time they'll be coming in is?
They, we don't have them, like, they don't do that. Like, if we want them to come in, because it's expensive. I mean, that, that's the reason why we haven't come in when we, when we've done something and then it trues itself out, meaning that you have some years of experience to, to deal with it. It doesn't say you can call, say, hey, we need you to come in and, and look at something or talk about something. But they aren't, like, your auditor. They just come in.
And they don't come cheap, okay?
Right. Isn't it an expensive process?
Expensive process.
If we-
The reason we were reporting about it a bit ago-
Is there were discrepancy on what they were rejecting and discrepancy on what we were collecting. That's what we tried to resolve. Why was there this discrepancy? And it had to do with the way we were calculating and the way that, and what they were assuming that we were projecting. And that's been resolved. And we did that to satisfy our needs for our budget, 2015 budget, or 2015 budget. We've got those numbers now. So when the 2016 budget was prepared, it used the benefit of that discussion a year ago to project the figures for this year. So that's, that's how that had been.
And we integrated the E and R debt. We have put the E and R debt in at that time in the water treatment plant upgrade.
All right. Thanks for the group. Everybody has received their liaison appointments. I'm sorry, I've been commenting everybody's wishes, but we see everybody got a big one. I encourage you to hit with number one, your predecessor who was liaison before you, and number two, with your contact person, your, your person that's in your department, I guess is the, is kind of a review of any issues that you might have. Again, this meeting next month, that'll be a time for you to share any input that you have as a result of your discussion with your liaison. I know that Diana's reached out to Donald, his contact, hopefully Brian, that you've maybe, you've contacted Donald, got some ideas and talked about the thing, telling him, and Angelo's switched.
I'm on board too.
Angelo's with police, you've been, you've been with, with the answer. So, I appreciate your good work there. I mentioned that we had, I had reviewed the city manager's salary. We had a merit increase budget before him, in the budget, based on comments that I received from council. If we perform satisfactory, we will proceed with the three percent increase. That's my other problem. But I, I took all the comments that you gave and I shared it with him, and we will review again in December or January next year for, in preparation for this coming, coming statement. Henry hadn't had a raise in five years, by the way. The, I'm, I'm in the process of making committee appointments. And that is things like the Parks and Rec Board, the Planning and Zoning Board, the Water and Zoning Appeals. I've already talked to Mr. Heans out there, and he's agreed to serve on the Parks and Rec Board. I hope to be able to bring those to you Monday night for your approval. We haven't contacted all the ones that I've selected yet. That's the reason I hesitate to bring up any names right now. But if you have anybody, any names, okay, somebody picked up that I select, is, they're more than two hundred, has a bunch of them, give them to me. I mean, I, if you have any suggestions of people that they want to serve for, if anybody in the office or in the audience might want to serve on a particular city committee, let me know on a street now or, I might be too late Monday. Come, come, I'm, I'm very eager to get the board's staff. The book, what we're, what we're talking about is Parks and Rec Board, the Planning and Zoning Board. There's, there's vacancies on all these positions. Board of Zoning Appeals, the Ethics Board, and-
Board of Elections.
The Board of Elections is, is kind of dormant for the next two years. So, everyone having a immediate issue with that. So, if anybody has any interest in those positions, make sure, let me know. We'll be contacting the, the names that we've, I've selected. So, now I'd like you to know that I'll be able to announce that through your approval. I'm always willing to listen to other candidates. One of the things that I do routinely is mayor, is, I'm over at the fourth grade elementary school, and, and talked to them about a contest about if I were mayor, I would write a little essay and tell me what they would do if they were mayor of Tony Town. And they, it's always a delight to get these fourth graders' comments. In the last meeting, you recall, we divided the fifty-some essays among the council, and the council picked their top ones. Out of those five, they picked the top three. And I, I have those to announce on Monday, I hope. What we're gonna, what we're planning to do is to bring the three winners in and award them a little gift card. Had the council meeting on Monday and thanked them for their participation. It was amazing that, that everybody picked the same three as winners. They're not in the same order, not one, two, three, but they, the three individuals that won, that won one, two, three, were all picked by everybody. So that tells me that, that they were the right candidates. The other two individuals who didn't win, I'm gonna give them, I'm gonna give them a little honorable mention card. But they, they did a good job. So, that's a lot of fun. We've already mentioned the fact that the Downtown Merchants Association is having, and also has a history poster contest. It's, they're celebrating on Saturday. We're gonna have a lot of festivities down here. They're gonna have hot dogs and beer for those, things of that nature downtown. And we're gonna present the winners for that contest. The, a lot of, a lot of posters are over in the bakery on display. So if you get a chance to go to the bakery before Saturday, they'll come over. They're really quite creative. They're pretty, they're a lot, they're a lot of fun. So, go ahead and do that. M L meetings on the fifteenth, where you mentioned that. The convention's coming up on the twentieth. One other thing I've been thinking about, and you'll probably hear more about this, and I haven't quite formulated it yet, but one of the things we are charged with is to provide adequate public facilities for our citizens. And some years ago, we developed an adequate public facilities ordinance, or, and a, and a kind of outline to what services we would provide and to what level we would stack these services. And it's been a while since we have looked at that. I'm, I'm going to form a committee made up of council and the staff and the public to relook at that, just to see if we're on track. You know, every ten years, we're charged with doing a comprehensive plan about the state. And I think it's only appropriate that every few years, every ten years or so, and it's probably been longer than that, we just relook at that adequate public facilities ordinance to see if it's, if it's where we need to be. Well, you know, what was hap, what was good for us ten, fifteen years ago may not fit today. So that's, that's just something else that I'm kind of formulating. I just haven't talked to this, anybody about this yet, but I just, it's kind of at the top of my mind. And, you know, we're talking about ways that we, we can, well, and what worked to mine is, is the difficulty we had in balancing the budget this year. What, what a strain it was to try to find- what, what a strain it was to try to find the funds to pay for the services that we have. And while we're providing services that, uh, are needed and used by the majority of the citizens, uh, we just need to make sure that they're, they're adequate, are we, are we, is there any, any areas of overkill, is there areas that, that could be, uh, shored up, trimmed up, or made more efficient, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So that's the purpose of this review of the adequate public facilities, to see if there's any changes. Okay, after the committee meets, then they come back and say, everything's fine, there's no need for change anything, and that's fine, we'll move right on. But then again, there may be some suggestions that can be brought up, that can, we can tweak, yeah, the public facilities ordinance that, uh, will make us more efficient, so that's, that's something that's on my mind, and that should be, uh, we'll learn more about that later, I haven't, I haven't got, uh, got a firm content on that, but I'd like to get that started, this, this summer is before fall. And, uh, I guess that's it. Anyone else from the audience, Anthony Marv?
I've been attending these meetings since nineteen sixty-one, and every year or two, the water and sewer rates come into question, always have. I think people think we're in the water and sewer business for profit. Every municipality might have the same problems. And the one way, might be two ways, you can lower your water and sewer rates. If you get the state and federal government to lower the regulations, if you get the chemical company to lower the, uh, chemical price ten percent, go to the engineering firm and say, you gotta lower your rates ten percent. The people of Construction Sewer Plant, oh, get all these people to lower the rates, and then they go to the city employee, and they're lowering the shower ten percent. Then maybe you can lower your water rates. That ain't gonna happen. So you have a plan, at all, it ain't gonna work. You're gonna have to go back to the constituents and tell them that you can't do what you promised to do, it ain't gonna work. I do have a plan, that I'll let you use and say it's yours, I don't mind. Go back to your constituents and tell them to use less water, and your water bills are lower.
I'd like to comment on that, that's all right. Uh, the, uh, last night, Michael Peruk, owner of the county councilman, was at Lori and nursing home for a speech, and I had a chance to sit with, uh, with Manchester Councilman, who was our Democratic chairman candidate, named Vince Ficelli, and he says, in Manchester, we subsidize our water rates with money from the general fund. He said, if we pass all of our costs on for our water treatment plant directly to the rate payers, I'd be lynched, and that's a quote from him last night, that didn't take... There's lots of ways to support an enterprise fund to lower costs, and I appreciate your input, on giving us some ideas on that.
And you would be willing to raise the property tax rate to take the money out of the general fund to pay you too?
Lots of options on ways to subsidize an enterprise fund. We'd have to take sale, you know, just, there are lots of ways to do it.
The tax's cheap.
Yeah. So, help me understand, this July, the water rates are set to increase, so does that mean that the citizens of Tony Town know a higher tax burden on how much water they use that?
No, tax burden, so why are you...
Okay, so why not totally build a that?
It's not a tax!
So it will be higher?
Yeah, right.
All right. So, I'm just trying to understand it, so we have an unfunded mandate, we have to pay back a loan, I understand that. So instead of, well, I mean, the thing is, in principle, at this point in time, people of Tony Town don't want to pay a higher rate, that's common sense, nobody wants to afford more money for an already high rate. So, when this mandate was issued, I mean, essentially, the people of Tony Town, in principle, did not ask for the original quality of water, those meant to be improved, nor did they really ask for the improvements themselves, the safety, and so we were forced to oblige. So, is a higher rate the only way? You're telling me that it was hard to balance the budget, and then you mentioned that there's some things that could be getting more efficient, perhaps cut, so maybe a reappropriation, revert some funds to the loan? I just feel as though there's alternatives that we're gonna explore, because I feel as though at this point, you wanna keep as little stress on the people of Tony Town as possible, so you would explore other options on to pay off the loan. So maybe send less money to parks, let the quality of parks go down a little bit for the sake of paying off water loans, and that way the people of Tony Town don't have to pay a higher bill.
Have, have you looked at the city budget enough?
I've looked at it once at twenty-one.
Do you know where there's waste? Do you know what could be cut?
I'm asking...
Do you know what you don't want to happen?
I'm just trying to understand.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, there is no waste in there, there's, if any, uh, we're cutting people short now. We're, we don't have the money to waste, uh, we don't have many options on being able to raise money, that's redundant, shit like that. And I know our past commissioner fully understands that the municipalities have very little or any control over the rates because of unfunded mandates.
So everything has...
That's, that's something we cannot control.
So everything has...
And we were lucky, let me tell you, we were lucky in that, I believe, the wastewater treatment plant, the state paid eighty-seven percent of that, right? Could you imagine if we had to pay sixty percent of it, what these water rates would be?
I'm sure they would.
And then you can check with New Windsor, who didn't get a penny, until, you know, they, they finally had a bank borrower and steal to get some money out of the state, because they're not big enough to get money from flush packs.
Okay.
So there, they had a base rate, which was horrendous. It's, it's not...
So everything has its...
That has to be, believe me.
Everything has its...
Our water and sewer rates have to support our water and sewer operation, it's, it's... We can't use general funds to support our water and sewer operation.
No, we can't use general funds to support it, because there are no general funds in order to support it.
I'm sorry?
So we can't use general funds, what is the constraint? There's not enough money to take out of general funds without lopsiding budget?
Well, I mean, I, I, uh, there, we have, we'd have to, if we could reduce costs of our grants, but, but again, it takes, it takes a number of people to operate the sewer system.
So what you're saying is we're breaking even on the budget, and that's why we can't take from the general fund?
Right.
Okay? That's all right.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, they're, when they built the, what, second sewer, uh, wastewater treatment plant, okay? They, we were then paying thirty dollars a quarter, uh, I've only been here ten years, so I'm going from what I've been told, okay, uh, towards paying off that bill, and some of the money was coming from the general fund. The concept being that we would have enough development over time, where we would be able to do away with the money coming out of the general fund, and start paying all of it out of the utilities fund, the thirty dollars, because we were gonna have a big building boom, okay? And what happened? The market went that way, we had nothing. So the utilities fund ended up with owing the general fund money, because we were paying more than what we were supposed to be paying...
The money from others is different, it's like a debt money.
...out of the general fund. So two years ago or so, we decided to appropriate the cost across the utilities fund and make them self-sufficient and independent. So we're not subsidizing water users out of the general fund anymore?
Well, Daniel, my point was Manchester is doing that.
Are they?
Yeah, he told me last night, Vince Ficelli's on the council over there, they're looking at the whole budget and putting monies from places they can find it anywhere into the enterprise fund to ease the burden on users. And based on my input to the campaign, people need relief, and so we'll look at that. I've asked the mayor to put on the agenda for Monday, looking at the 2011 agreement that, uh, that, with these rate increases in place, it's static analysis, to, to set a trend line in 2011 and not look at it by 2015. And so I think that's what we ought to do on Monday, and I've asked him to put it on the agenda. That's what I, is not produce this, uh, this paper here and hand it out.
All right, please.
You know, I think we have to stop grasping at fancy, we've had this now for the past couple of months. We're, we're in a new groove here, and that's good, I think Brad will do very well, because you've been at every one of these meetings for the last two years, you know what we're talking about. Now, I'm, I think you need to look at where we're at, how we got here, and why we're here. We have, over the years, have not looked at making money for ourselves, we have tried to do everything we possibly can for everyone in this town, and I wish you would not forget that.
Final thing I've forgotten.
Now, now, you just don't say it. As time goes by, and you will, I hope so, because it's gonna be a long, arduous four years if you don't have Frank Scott.
I have two things. When you have the children come in for the environmental, are you going to have them
read their, their piece that they wrote?
Well, you know what I've been thinking about?
That would be cute.
I would like it.
That would be cute, if you did that.
If they're not too embarrassed, I'd like it.
I'd like that.
I'll, I'll ask you to think about it.
And the second is, I would like the number of water meters that are still being read on an estimated basis, just because they don't have a battery, I would like that number, the exact number, on Monday. Because if they're way years behind, we need to get them bought up.
That's a good point.
Maybe I'll have to see downstairs how they're tracking.
Can you make a note of that and say, that could...
And I'd like to know how fast we're working to pitch them up, and somebody knocking on their door to say, hey, we wanna get in there and fix you up.
Well, see, that, that's part of the problem of the high water bill, people claim that they pay high water bills, but when in essence, they've been passed due paying their water bill for four, five, or six quarters, and we have insurance that they enter, but they just need more pay, the correct amount of, of water bill over there, so...
It's, it's good for them, it's a good process, we do that.
But that, we're working on that too, we've got the assistant, Marv.
I might tell Mr. Fraser, over the years, I've been very critical of the council, whenever something come up I disagree, I stood there and I protested, so, it ain't like I'm somebody that's taken up some all the time. Now, in, in years of tents in one area, when they built the new sewer plant, they put a thirty dollar surcharge on there for every meter to help to retard that debt, that's an agreement they made with the government. And I claim that was grossing unfair, because a little old lady did only use twenty gallons of water, uh, a week, uh, is paying as much as the pump company out here, just as much. Pump company may create thirty dollars, right? And I argued that, and argued that, and argued that, I just, I'm bringing that up to let it show up, I'm not necessarily picking on you as such, it's just that I don't believe you're right on this issue.
Yeah, I agree with you that, that, that's a flat fee, doesn't apply equally for usage. Also, we'd like to have, how many citizens are paying, I've had shut-off notices, we like to know how many citizens are paying late fees because they can't meet it. I had a bad battery in my, my house, and it estimated, I had a thousand dollar water bill last year, and, uh, they came out, and they were reading, from outside the house was the battery, where the reg, and the battery was dead, so the estimate was wrong, and I was very happy that the town made an agreement with me, allowed me to pay five hundred dollars one month and five hundred dollars the next month, there's no way we had an extra thousand dollars in the, in the, in the budget for water. What's the, uh, so those are a couple of things we need, we need some statistics on, on shut-off, we met people with their, with their water shut-off, uh, for prolonged periods of time while we're walking door to door.
I have a question. On this, um, form that was handed out, that's the Dan and Ford thing, it says that these are working papers, not for public distribution. Is there a final version that is for public distribution? I mean, or did this become for public distribution? I mean, Don bought it, made a copy of it, and wanted to make a point, but is there a report that's for public...
Or back to the draft? That's the work copy?
Okay, that's what you all gave us, or gave them. So is there an updated one that has other information that is for the public, so they can see?
Yeah, I know that the way this normally works is, you know, they come out and they give us a draft, and they say, these are the assumptions we're working with, are they right? And then they redo them, and they say, okay, here's the report, and then that's the report that's presented at a public meeting.
I mean, the number on this draft is the same as the one in the newspaper, so I mean, the numbers are the same, but I was just wondering, is there some kind of an updated version that has final numbers in it for public consumption?
That is my point, Mrs. Fraser, that we would have the same numbers on the report I held out, as we're in the Tony Town Record, uh, that went out, that went out public.
I, I'm going to, uh, end this session on water rates tonight, we're not, we don't have time for the background to talk about this.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna know if there's a public paper.
Well, uh, Danny Ordness has been passed, is available through our city office. You can get a copy of it, it's got mine, we can prepare for it.
Okay.
Uh, anything else, we come before the council.
If we don't vote on it, can we get a motion for it, then?
Is there a say?
So...
We're saying, all right.